We're gonna hold off on bringing the council session for another couple of minutes to give ourselves time for one more person to show. If that does not happen, then we will have a truncated version of tonight's session, so. I know, I use a multi-cell bell cord.
All right. Good call, the regular meeting to order with a declaration of quorum, barely. Mayor, Councilor Meyer, Councilor McCarthy, and Councilor Harden are excused. And so let's all stand reflexively. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so start off today with presentation from the school district. Mr. Bacon, I see you back there.
Good evening.
Hi, sir.
All right, well, I'll be quick. Believe it or not, Christmas break is upon us. So, calendar of events, quite a bit going on here this week. We roll into our final week of school before break begins on Friday. It's our last day of school with kids. And then Christmas break will return for staff on January 2nd, students on January 3rd. Right now, we have a lot of basketball going on. We've got boys and girls wrestling. We have bowling going on. We have winter concerts taking place at the middle schools and the high school. So please feel free to get involved. Check the website. It has everything on there. I'd be happy to read through everything tonight for you, but I'm not sure that's what everybody's looking for too. So we'll jump right past that. Construction, believe it or not, continues at Highland Hills with how we're putting the sods down right now. And we have the west in there is full access for playground for students. The place, the cover play area is up and going and has been full use for the students, which has been wonderful with some of the weather that we're starting to have with the rain. So that's been very helpful. The doors are now working, so parents should travel, their students are traveling through the front entrance now. So we're be ready to get started with phase two late spring. We're getting ready to start our third series seminar of our mental health series, which will be held on January 9th at 6:30. And this, this topic is going to be what parents need to know about suicide prevention. You can, parents can register and sign up on Zoom. They can also attend in person at Rocky Heights Elementary. But if you do register for that Zoom, you will be provided a video link to where you can watch it after the fact. So if you want to sign up, but you are unable to make it, I encourage anyone to sign up so that they at least get that link afterwards, so they're able to watch it. Dinner will be provided for the first 50 people that show up at Rocky Heights, and childcare is also available there as well during that time. So doing whatever we can do to help folks get there and hopefully get some good information from them. Also in partnership with First Student, we're, they're rolling out the First View app, which can be looked at on your desktop or if you download it on your phone. And basically it's live tracking for where the bus is approximately at when it left, the bus stop. So allows parents a lot better access to where kids might be in the traveling buses. So again, I'd be happy to explain the step-by-step download process, but I would encourage anyone that they're interested in doing that, if they need help, reach out to the district office. We're happy to help out or over there with First Student as well. There we go.
Wow, that has to be the fastest way.
We're working at it.
Nice, lots of good information. The times again on the deal at Rocky Heights?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Hey, anybody have any questions for Mr. Bacon? Well, thank you, sir.
Okay.
To the next step.
Yeah, okay. Have a good night and happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. Same to you. All right, next is our citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes, state your name and address, and direct your comments to me. Anybody wishing to do so, sir, step forward.
My name is Brian Owens. My address is 665 West Division Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon.
I think your mic is off.
Thanks, officer. Is that better? Okay. My name's Brian Owens. My address is 665 West Division Avenue, Hermiston, Oregon, 97838. I'm the owner of the Hermiston roller rink and all the property back behind there, which I've been attempting to clean up and do something with for the past 12 years. The issue I'm having seems to be miscommunication between the irrigation district, the city of Hermiston, the Corps of Engineers, which I've been involved with for almost 15 and a half, 16 years now on that low-lying drainage ditch that goes from 7th all the way to the end of Earlbird. Everything back there behind the roller rink, in 1990, the city redirected the ditch. And when they redirected the ditch to go down Earlbird instead of crossing over Main Street down to 10th, they put in a pipe and a concrete weir with a screen on the top that raised the level of the ditch by almost four feet, which floods my property. And I've been dealing with it for, like I said, about the last 12 years trying to get it corrected. First going to the Corps of Engineers, them telling me it's an irrigation district problem. The irrigation district, which was working with me for quite a few years, but they kept saying the concrete weir and the screen that the city put in is the city's issue. And I have not had much luck with the city. I've, in the beginning, I was talking to the city and they told me it was irrigation district problem. And going back and forth, I had permission from the irrigation district to go ahead and clean the ditch since no one has cleaned that ditch since the 90s and get it ready to put in a underground pipe, all at my expense. I've spent over $150,000 cleaning the ditch, getting it ready, getting it back into a condition where it was a free-flowing ditch instead of stagnant water. Instead of being three and a half to four feet of stagnant water with dead leaves and debris in the ditch, which actually was a, not only a health hazard because of the mosquitoes and the muck and the yuck, but a hazard for children because children play in that ditch and they get stuck. Many times I've had to go down there and pull them out of that ditch because they were stuck up to their waist in mud and waste and debris. And dealing with the city, for a long time, they kept telling me it was the irrigation district. And I've worked, I've been to the city council twice, been to the planning commission meetings two or three times over all these years. And other than them telling me it's most likely just my responsibility, Clint even told me, he said, "Go to the city engineer, get with them, find out what you need to do to make sure you have the right size pipe, right size screen, and all that kind of stuff." I said, "No." I cleared the ditch. I got it all the way back down to where it was just a small little free-flowing creek, no longer three or four feet of stagnant water. And to do that, which I told them I had to do, I opened up the face of that concrete with a small jackhammer, made small slits in it to allow the water level to lower down. And someone from the city went in there while I was in the hospital and put a steel sign across the face of that backing the water back up where the water is now back to three and a half to four feet deep and flooding my property again. And I'm just wanting to find out what's going on and why. You know, if they wanted me to put a tighter screen, all they had to do was ask. I've got pictures and everything. I can show you. Their screen that they had had inch and a half to two-inch slats in it. And before I started to complain, I've been having to go down there for the last 15 years and clean that screen because the city wouldn't do it. The irrigation district won't do it. And once I got it down to where it was a nice, small, free-flowing creek, probably about two, maybe 20, at the most, maybe about 20 gallons per minute flowing down the creek, which is not much. And like I said, now it's backed up to three to four feet of standing water. And it's, nope, the city won't take care of it. It's my property. I know it is. City says it's my property. The only thing is, you guys need access to it because you have plumbed all of your street drains into that ditch that goes from 7th all the way down.
Can you wrap your comments up? Can you wrap your comments up? You're running out of time.
And all I'm asking is to find out, are you going to take care of the ditch or are you going to let me take care of it and continue to open that up so it'll drain? I've already spent a small fortune because the city has told me to. They said, "It's your problem. You need to do it." They keep saying when I come to the meetings that they'll think about it, but they never do. My property now is a hazard again to the public because of all the standing water. And this summer, it'll be terrible with mosquitoes again. I just want the city to give me some kind of resolve to where I know if it's going to get fixed by you or if you're going to allow me to continue to spend my money to fix it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Owens, could you step back up? We have a question for you.
Mr. Owens, you were saying that the city went on your property and put up a steel pipe or?
Well, there's, on the end of the ditch where the concrete weir that they put in in the 1990s, which raised the ditch level, and it has a screen on the top at about a 20-degree angle. I had to, like I said, when I told them that I had to draw up the ditch down to get it cleared up, they said, "No problem. Don't worry about it." And I went in there and I cut some small slits in the face of the concrete to get it to where it would drain. Once I got it drained, I got sick, went in the hospital. When I come out of the hospital, a little over a month and a half ago, all of a sudden, the ditch is full. It's backed all the way back up to 7th now, and it's flooding into my property.
Did you say it was a screen that was put over something?
They put a old street sign.
A street sign?
They drilled a couple of small holes in it that are about the size of my pinky, which plugged up very quickly and stuck it over my, the slots I put in there for a spring. And now it's backed back up to where it's, all the way back up to the top flowing over the top of the screen, and it won't be long until the top of the screen implodes like it always does.
Okay, did you get a letter of notification?
No, I didn't. I went to the assistant city manager. Is that, I asked around who did it. They said I had to talk to him. I went and talked to him. He said he didn't know anything about it, other than he was told that I broke his ditch all up and he had it covered.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen input?
Sorry, I'm the owner of my name is Nick Ridley, 1003 Southwest Olive Court here in Hermiston, Oregon. I'm here to speak about the budget and the proposed options to fill up the, or cover the overspend of this night, chance last week, or last meeting to speak on it. But what you're saying is back in June, we approved a budget for, that was nearly $2 million, or had a revenue stream of nearly $2 million less than what we were approving to spend. The plan to fill that up was into departmental loans to cover the balance. Now we're looking at tables that have been provided. We are looking at a status quo budget that has increased expenses by about $230,000 and decreased revenue streams by about $673,000. So not only the initial approval, we're routinely in short, but now we've added expenses and dropped the revenue sources. And we're looking at, those two combined make up the $900,000 that we're happy to fill. My first initial question is when we're looking at a budget that we know we can cover with existing revenue sources, how can we add nearly a quarter of a million dollars to our expenses? That would be from the, it's not non-critical, but not, the part-time library positions, the parts and right positions, and $55,000 for council fee, which is for you guys to do what you do. But in a time when we are knowingly short and looking at taking out loans to cover expenses, it seems not like a great idea to add additional. I would like to say that out of the four proposed revenue generators and two proposed cuts, I'm very much in support of two of the four revenue generators. The increase in the TRT and expanding or updating the planning department fee seems to make sense. It's going to add burden on to visitors, contractors, people coming from outside our community to enjoy what we have to offer. The public safety fee, however, seems to fall a little short. And from my perspective, it seems like a cleverly named fee or line item that's fairly hard to argue with. But I do have some questions on it. The first would be, does anybody know how this will directly impact public safety? How will charging $360,000 to our citizens actually improve public safety? I, I may be wrong, but I don't believe that this money is actually earmarked or dedicated or has a defined scope of work tied to it. It's not going directly to new police staff or specifically called out that that's what it's going to be used for, which makes me sit and question whether it's actually public safety or if it's just the filler to cover the shortfall. And it sounds nice. Public safety sounds nice. It's really hard to argue with and people looking at it on the ticket and say, "Yeah, it wouldn't be for public safety." I doubt that it's going to have a sort of impact on our public spaces. I don't think it's going to keep the homeless camps from showing up in our public parks. I get that there are other things that are restricting our ability to take care of that currently. I don't think it's going to stop people from doing drugs in our public library, out in front of our public library or out of the entrance right here when I walked in with my kid. It's not going to address that. It's just going to fill up a budget shortfall or an over-expense, whatever you want to call it. I do ask that as council members, if you're considering adding this on as a, the possible solution, look at adding a timeline to it, enable a sunset, so it's not a permanent fee that you're asking our citizens to pay for the long term that will, it's going to grow from $5 to $10. And if you don't have a defined scope of work tied to that money, money's fungible. It's going to go wherever you want. It's not going to go towards public safety. It's not going to go towards adding new police officers. It's just going to be a nicely named fee that is open to be used however we want. I very much suggest defining the scope of work for this type of fee. The next revenue generator is the business license fee, which I have very similar sentiment. You're looking at asking entrepreneurs to pay $250,000. Initially, it was proposed at $500 per year for the added benefit, as far as I can see, being a part of a list. There's no, there's nothing tied into that, the license fee that's going to offer more services or connect them with each other. I've heard several of you mention that it'd be nice to be able to keep track of businesses that are operating in our community. My counter to that is that you don't have to charge those businesses to do it. It'd be pretty simple to offer a free registration. I am very confident that our brand-new IT department could help facilitate that, and reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce would be a good place to start the list.
Mr. Ridley, need you to wrap your comments up?
Yep, I got one more paragraph. Ultimately, I would like to see as many cuts proposed as revenue sources. There's an entire list from coming back at past council meetings of, let's say, honorable mention revenue sources. There aren't any of those on the cuts side. Nothing has been proposed that I have seen for additional cuts that are just lingering out there that we're not quantifying. I know those are hard conversations to have because as Mayor Brownson mentioned in the last meeting, it's, it's people, it's, it's jobs, and that sucks. But we're also looking at a $2 million discrepancy from the initial onset of this. $900,000 now. Those conversations should be had. I also want to state that I'm very much in support of the police force adding three new members. I would very much also like to understand if the recommended budget actually has that $370,000 tied into it. I was running through numbers earlier today and it looks like there's about $350,000 included in the 170 surplus and the personnel expenses.
Mr. Ridley?
Yep.
Time's up.
Absolutely. Thanks. I'll be back at the next one. Appreciate it.
Any other non-agenda items? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items A and B. Are there any items that need to be removed by the council? Is there any council comments on agenda items A and B? Any public comment on consent agenda items A and B? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A and B?
Remove.
Removed by Councilor Litten. Seconded by Councilor Dran. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. As a reminder, as council president, I do get to vote, unlike the mayor's position. Okay, no items were removed from the consent agenda items. Okay, no items were removed from the consent agenda items. Next we have is ordinances of resolution, Resolution 2299, RWS Phase 2 pump improvements. City Manager Smith?
Yes, I'll have Mr. Morton do the side of.
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of the council, this resolution is the final piece of our nearly $20 million of capital improvements in the Feathville Road corridor for adding additional water and discharge water options in that area. Um, so you will remember back in early fall, uh, we awarded a contract for acquiring pumps and motors associated with this project because of the long lead time. Additionally, uh, breaking the project into smaller pieces allows us to get more, um, regional and local contractors able to bid on different items of work. Uh, so if we go out and purchase pumps and motors, it frees up more opportunity for local contractors who don't have to, um, to buy those large pieces of equipment. Uh, so this latest and final piece that we advertised in November was the actual installation of the pumps and motors associated with this project. And so, uh, we received two bids, um, opened to those about two weeks ago. Uh, so we're recommending for, uh, award this contract to CNE Trenching for $3.7 million. Let's stand for any questions.
And council questions?
Is the, is this the one that's out of Pasco?
Uh, CNE Trenching is out of Triacity, I believe, yes.
Okay, where's Emory and Sons?
I'm not sure where they're from.
Okay, so you don't know if it's Hermiston business or outside of Hermiston?
Yeah, so this specific piece of work involves a lot of electricians and electrical workers. So most of them did come out of Tri Cities, so they're looking at these.
Okay, but you don't know if Hermiston is the...
I do know that Emory and Sons is not from Hermiston.
Well, okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Any public comment on Resolution 2299? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2299 and lay it on the record?
So.
Second.
Moved by Councilor, um, Der- uh, Baron. And seconded by Councilor Dran. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next, Resolution 2300, purchase 20, 44 acres of land within the South Hermiston Industrial Park. City Manager Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of the council, uh, this Resolution 2300, as was mentioned, is to authorize the purchase of 44 acres in the South Hermiston Industrial Park at a cost of just under $2 million. So to give everybody a little bit of the background and history on where we're at and how we got here. Uh, so, uh, red outlined area is what, uh, for many years we referred to as our Cook Industrial Site, approximately 360 acres of well-served industrial land. Uh, that image, um, right there, um, is from, satellite image from April of 2021. And, uh, this image is two years later from this spring. Um, so you can see all the activity that has begun to occur in that area. So you can see we have Meyer Distributing developed 40 acres at that location. And then we've had two, uh, large acquisitions by Cloud Computing Operation for developing industrial operations in those areas. So, uh, in the span of two years, we've seen the vast majority of our developable, um, industrial employment plans either develop or become purchased for imminent development. So, uh, during that time, uh, we anticipate in 2024, or as, as has already been, um, work has already been completed to partition off from the two parcels that were shown in yellow for the Cloud Computing Operation. Uh, this area shown in light blue, uh, was determined by the company to be surplus to what they needed. And so they began the process of partitioning that off, as well as developing, uh, water sewer and street infrastructure along that alignment to bring Southeast 9th Street from Penny Avenue down to Feathville Road. Uh, so what we're recommending is acquiring that 44 acre parcel outlined in light blue. Um, on the ground right now, as far as existing assets and amenities and utilities in that area, uh, you can see that there is, uh, active city-owned potable water supply available on the north and south, in Penny Avenue and in Feathville, uh, Road. Additionally, there is, uh, gravity-fed sanitary sewer available on the north end in Penny Avenue. Uh, from a power distribution standpoint, um, there's, uh, power distribution available on the north end on the Penny Avenue side. Uh, from a large-scale economic development standpoint, the really attractive asset is a very heavy-duty power available in the Feathville Road corridor. Uh, similar situation for the natural gas, uh, supply in that area. Again, distribution level, um, infrastructure located in Penny Avenue. Um, and then, um, in Feathville Road is a high-capacity trunk line that serves, uh, the entire South Hermiston Industrial Park. Comes down Feathville Road and up to Kelly Boulevard to get into the park currently. And then also fiber optics have recently been extended and enhanced in Feathville Road. Uh, then on the horizon, we know that, um, we broke ground a week and a half ago on, um, these improvements to extend Southeast 9th Street, uh, from Penny Avenue down to Feathville Road. Um, the, the company developing on the west side of this property there is paying to construct, um, curb gutter sidewalk, uh, develop the roadway to center line plus 10 feet um, onto the east side of the, the roadways. So if and when development occurs on the blue property, um, all that will have to occur is to do the curb gutter and sidewalk on that side and then the infill paving of that street. Additionally, uh, the project underway right now is installing a new sanitary sewer lift station at Penny and 9th. And then also developing, um, a gravity sewer line all the way down to Feathville Road. So ultimately, any development that occurs all the way along that frontage on that 44 acres has immediate access to sanitary sewer services. And then additionally, uh, this line will connect the two existing potable water lines currently located in Penny and Feathville Road. So again, providing potable water to, uh, all along the frontage of Southeast 9th for that property. So of course, the big question is why purchase it? Um, you know, it's, why would the city need to be purchasing it? So as I mentioned, um, you know, this site is shovel-ready, um, has all the utilities and will have additional utilities installed here, uh, early this next year. Uh, probably the biggest reason though is that it is available right now. Um, and this all gets back to maintaining, uh, local control of some of our primary economic development assets that we have in the community. As you saw up there, um, we had for many years, um, a large amount of large-scale industrial land available for attracting large-scale, uh, employment operations and light industrial operations um, with, uh, the development of, um, the warehouse up there, as well as the two data centers that they're doing down there. Uh, now we have gone completely the other direction and have a general lack of light industrial land available. So, uh, we wanna make sure that that property, um, remains available, um, by being a local control and doesn't just become what would be considered to be like a, a corporate zombie property. So an example of a, a corporate zombie property that we have just here in the, in the community, this is again, that same South Hermiston industrial area, the Feathville Road. Uh, you can see the Walmart Distribution Center located there. Uh, Walmart Distribution Center, um, there along its Kelly Boulevard frontage has, uh, easily 30 acres of otherwise highly developable light industrial land that they've shown no real interest or need in developing in the past 25 years. Um, requests back to Bentonville as to what their plans are for it. Again, have no real interest or desire to, to develop it. On the off chance that they might someday maybe feel like they, uh, need to expand. Uh, meanwhile, it just sits there undeveloped, uh, while it's otherwise fully developable and ready for development if, uh, if it was available. Similar situation had occurred, um, just north of that, about 25 acres. Um, the Mooreback, um, out of Salem, uh, the owners of Hermiston Foods, uh, they had those 25 acres, talking with them. You know, the plan was always that, you know, maybe someday they might want to expand their operations there, but they didn't really have any immediate plans to do that. Um, and that was generally fine because we did have so much other available industrial land. Um, but then, uh, obviously they did not expand and then they went out of business. And so now that 25 acres has actually re-entered the market. So we are actively marketing that, uh, for economic development because that property is totally surrounded by utilities. Uh, and then finally, just one more example of really large, um, corporate, what I would consider to be zombie property is the 640 acres owned by Union Central Railroad, South Feathville Road. Um, again, they have very little, um, motivation or plan for developing, um, in the short term. Uh, so we don't really engage in a whole lot of active marketing of that property, uh, for economic development purposes. Uh, more on the commercial side of things, an example of a, a zombie property in the downtown core area. Um, this is on North First Place, looking generally to the northwest, uh, right next to Rudy's Restaurant. Um, that property was owned by Seattle's Children, Seattle Children's Hospital for many, many years. Um, and whenever we would reach out and try to talk to their real estate folks, it was very evident, um, that they weren't really that familiar with the property. And simply the, the costs of becoming familiar with the property to dislodge it from their ownership or do anything with it, you know, wasn't worth, uh, the effort to go through, uh, to get them to focus on that property. That property has since finally, uh, sold to a local company. So, uh, these zombie properties, they stunt job growth, they stunt property tax growth, and they hold up these properties that are otherwise valuable and developable. Uh, and when they're owned by these large corporations, you know, out of the region, they just get warehoused on the balance sheet somewhere and largely forgotten about. And so, um, that's what creates this owner inertia, uh, that prevents any efforts required to sell. So when we, you know, say we reach out to one of these large corporate entities that owns one of these properties, if it's been five, six, seven, 10 years, uh, anybody who'd been involved in the original acquisition of the property, you know, they're long gone. Now if we can find the right person to talk to, um, now they have to go through the whole process to refamiliarize themselves with the property. They have to determine, maybe they do wanna keep it, maybe they have some plans for it. You know, maybe their corporate directive is that they're not selling the real estate right now because it makes their balance sheet look good. Or, you know, maybe they're gonna revisit that policy in the next quarter or so, call them back in six months. And so it just creates a real challenge for us to actually see those properties develop. So, uh, that's why, uh, when we became aware that that property now outlined in red, um, was gonna become available in late 2022. Uh, we spent most of 2023 working with some other local partners to try and determine uh, the best opportunity for, uh, making sure that property came into local ownership and didn't, uh, end up with a, a large corporation. Uh, ultimately, um, towards the second half of 2023, uh, we decided to just pursue having the city proceed with, uh, purchasing it ourselves at a market rate price for, as you can see, just under $2 million and utilizing the utility fund, um, to purchase that. And really, I think we would view this as, um, the utility fund just making an investment in a local asset uh, with resources that it has available, um, rather than, uh, thinking about it as a, a purchase of something that is, uh, that we're gonna use up. Uh, so the utility fund in October of, uh, this year has a balance of about $6.5 million. Uh, the reason why we have the cash balance of that size is largely, um, that we save up, uh, for large expenditures. Uh, the one that we use as an example most often is things like our, um, our membranes out of our sewer treatment plant, uh, very large, um, one-time expenditure. And so council made a decision a number of years ago, uh, that rather than going out and borrowing funds to do those types of maintenance projects, we wanted to do a pay-as-you-go method and pay cash when those things came up. Meanwhile, that means we have to spool up cash so that we can pay for them as they come up. Uh, luckily, those membranes have lasted longer than, than we would have otherwise anticipated, uh, pushing that out, uh, for a number of years. And so, uh, so we do have that fund balance that has continued to grow. Now, we don't just sit on that cash as cash. We do try to manage it so that it's not, uh, losing purchasing power. Uh, but we're not out putting it in, you know, Amazon stock or, you know, higher-risk, you know, stocks or those types of things. We put it in, uh, what is really a pretty low-risk, but also low-yield investments. Uh, one of our primary investments is the local government investment pool, LGIP. And so if you look at, uh, the past five years of returns from LGIP, that has returned right at about 2% annual returns, uh, on our unused cash that we have available to us. So the, the plan for this property, um, in the immediate term, or the, the kind of worst-case scenario term, is again, based on this conversation that we'd had with local partners over the past year, uh, we feel very confident that, uh, given the need, um, if there was an extreme need for cash, um, that we could easily liquidate the asset, um, turn it into cash within the span of one fiscal year for an amount equal to what we would be paying for it, uh, right now. Um, if, if we don't have that need, uh, to suddenly liquidate the, the asset, uh, the plan or my strategy, uh, from an economic development standpoint, would be to, uh, hold the property or, uh, market the property and not look to, to more aggressively sell it for a five-year period. Uh, advertise the property at a asking price of $75,000 an acre. Um, I would characterize that as to be an aspirational price for several reasons. Uh, one, it, uh, keeps away the tire kickers, as well as simply the, uh, the folks who may be, um, speculating themselves. Um, and then we're right back into the same position we were having a corporate owner, um, that forgets about it. If we just have somebody that comes in and buys the property to speculate and hold it for 20 years themselves. And so having that, uh, large asking price, um, allows us, and also that when we do get, uh, reasonable actual economic development prospects that come through with significant job creation, then we can actually engage in a little negotiation with them. Uh, but the intention would never be to sell it for less than that $44,000 per acre that we had, uh, would be purchasing it, uh, right now. Uh, additionally, from a strategy standpoint, I would strongly recommend we do not subdivide it any less than 10 acres, um, in any one shot. And then, um, if we reach the end of that five-year holding period and we did look to liquidate the property back into cash more quickly, um, I would recommend that we, uh, not accept a price less than a little over $48,000 per acre. And that equals, uh, basically what we would see with a 2% annual return, uh, from the LGIP. So then again, it's really more about taking assets that we have currently invested elsewhere, um, and turning it into a local investment, uh, that we can simultaneously leverage to hopefully, uh, make some economic development opportunities more, uh, quickly and readily accessible for the community. So with that, I'd stand for any questions?
Okay, so, uh, one of the questions that I have is, is that we, we sell the property at some point in time. Does that money, that money goes right back into the, into the fund as opposed to into the general fund, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And that would be how it would be written out and presented?
Okay.
Yes?
So when we were talking about, um, in one of the, this two slides ago, uh, the not, you know, selling it for less than the, oh, that one, um, the 44,000, um, that one, uh, plus the negotiable, uh, depending on what year, are we going to take into account, um, inflation? Cause we saw how that caught up and is one of the things that we're wrestling with right now. Cause if we don't do that, then we're going to be actually selling it for less than we bought it for.
Yeah, I think that's the intention with that second bullet point on this next slide, which is, um, assuming what else would we have been doing with this cash? What else is that we would have put into the LGIP? And so that 48,580, that's what that, um, current investment would be worth had it been invested in the LGIP, or LGIP in five years. So the intention would be that each year we would accept a price not less than 2% higher than the previous year.
Ms. Litten?
Thank you. Um, I would like to know for the property, like, uh, Walmart DC and the other food property, are they paying taxes to Hermiston or are they paying taxes to the county?
Well, so all property taxes are paid to the county and then the county distributes them to all the underlying jurisdictions like the city. Both Walmart Distribution Center and, um, what is now Columbia Basin Bioscience, formerly Hermiston Foods, uh, they do pay, part of their property taxes do come to the city.
Okay, so is it the county's responsibility if they raise taxes, uh, upon their property? Is there something they have to where if it just sits there for a length of time, they can just raise up the property tax or it can't happen that way?
No.
Thank you.
Any other council comments, questions? Mr. Morton?
Just a comment, I appreciate city staff's hard work on this, um, I appreciate the presentation, uh, especially the zombie properties. I, I think, uh, looking forward to the future, it's, it's gonna be great to avoid this, uh, especially to avoid... to add more helpful land. I know we're running issues with the urban growth battery and potentially have to request more if we want more light industrial or heavy industrial to come into the city, so I think it's a great investment for the city. So, thank you.
And I think putting special emphasis on the fact that this is not the city budget that we are wrestling with, because we are talking about the fact that we are trying to, you know, fill holes over here, oh, but look, we're going to make a big bunch, it's not the same pool. And I think we really need to emphasize that, because otherwise I think the message is a little misleading if we aren't careful. So I appreciate the fact that you're pointing out that we're using it from money we saved up for another project that we don't need to use yet, but we're going to take care of that first. So we're not, you know, spending money we don't have on something that we don't need yet.
And should be also noted that we can't really use the money that we have set aside as just for general fund purposes in any case, correct?
I would like to know, I notice to be further down the road, we purchased the land and it's being sold, is there a way that in the contract that we won't have those what you call zombie lands, if they decide to just sell and move like we have had some companies do that after big tax, property tax break, and then when at the end of that big property tax break, they sell and leave? So is there a way that suddenly can be written into that to make sure that that doesn't happen?
Well, I think if and when we get to a point where we have interested buyers in the property, everything's negotiable. It's going to be something that'll be up for discussion.
All right, public comment? Anybody out there? Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2301 and lay it on record?
Someone?
Second.
And motion, and move by Councilor Brown, second by, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Peterson, my names have been rough today. Counselor, uh, been seconded by Councilor Peterson. Roll call?
Yes.
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 And it passes unanimously. Next, Resolution 2301, return of the A misdemeanor prosecution to the Houston Hermiston Municipal Court.
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Some of you were around when we started this discussion, which was right before I came to the city. But so in 2014, there was a lot of discussion at the city council level, with Circuit Court, with the district attorney's office, and the final decision to send a or to stop prosecuting A misdemeanors in the municipal court was in April of 2014. So the initial decision was to try that out for 20 months and then reevaluate. At 20 months, we reevaluated and the council decided to let the initial decision go forward. So during the past nine-plus years, the city's been working to improve efficiencies at the municipal court, implementing some new software, doing other process improvement efforts, and, you know, always having open communication with the circuit court. And so at this, at this time, staff feels very comfortable being able to bring back those A misdemeanors to the municipal court and to, and what we did find is we looked at it a number of times during that time period is the time for, the time it takes for us to prosecute an A misdemeanor versus what it takes at the circuit court is much shorter. And so this, and again, in a lot of ways, would help the justice system run a little more smoothly, both here and at the circuit court level. So over the past few years, the council has had a number of goals related to this. Originally, back in 2020, council wanted us to do this, and, you know, that was right at the beginning and had a lot of other things going on with the pandemic. And so we're here tonight with a resolution to bring A misdemeanor prosecution back to the Hermiston Municipal Court. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We can start with explaining what is a A misdemeanor, what is that considered to be?
I don't know.
It's your turn.
See if I can get some sound going. All right, so in state of Oregon, the misdemeanors are just broke up into A, B, and C. A is being the more serious of the misdemeanors. And so right now, that would include driving under the influence, theft in the second degree, which is just a different level of theft based on values, criminal mischief, there's a A misdemeanor there, we currently have a C misdemeanor, criminal mischief, that our court handles, this is going to be one more level up. There's a number of others, those are kind of the ones that stick out the most that we'll probably see trespassing will also come back into the city for us to prosecute.
And isn't it true that A misdemeanors are characterized for a sentence no longer than up to one year in the county jail, as opposed to prison?
Yeah, so you're looking at 364 days of jail available, as well as a fine up to $6,250 or something. Definitely a little bit more severe than what we've seen with our B's.
Okay, so these cases will come under Mr. Ben Dixon, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is going to be a heavier load for him to?
Yes.
Is he going to have to do more days? You want to come up? You can.
Well, I mean, he can speak to, we have been in discussions with Mr. Ben Dixon, as well as our, our public defender and our city prosecutor, knowing that that would increase the hours, that they would need to be compensated in, for those hours. And so we've been, even the budget that you adopted did have additional funds to do some of that. And so, but, Mr. Ben Dixon, if you have any other comments?
I was going to use the chance to really squeeze your toes, but I guess I won't do that. No, I, I, I don't know yet, it's hard to really say how much time, much more time it's going to take, but I will say that DUIs traditionally are kind of the most commonly prosecuted cases nationwide. I think we've kind of been through those numbers a little bit on how many of those we are expecting to receive. I will say that they're also the most tried cases, and so we'll have more jury trials, I expect. With DUIs and thefts, theft in the second degree, that's a higher, higher level of that. But DUIs in particular, there are mandatory fines and fees that the state legislature have set that are, that can be fairly stiff. And so there, for us as a court staff, I think the biggest benefit is that we're able to have folks in here quickly and to have their case adjudicated much quicker. When I was practicing as a defense attorney until four or five years ago, it wasn't uncommon where I'd visit with somebody who had a DUI and they were cited in the circuit court, they would have to keep checking with the circuit court to see if their case was filed. And my advice to a lot of these folks sometimes was, you may get a letter in the mail, you may not. And sometimes DUIs frankly just fell through cracks, and not, not to blame, place blame at all, but I think that the district attorney's office can be overwhelmed and their caseload is fairly heavy. But this would allow us to quickly identify those cases, we have a prosecutor who's ready to handle that, we have a defense attorney who, both of them, I think, are doing a good job. And so we can address those things and have them, have people brought to the court within a matter of weeks, rather than wondering if or when the charge will come. Misdemeanors have to be charged within two years by law, and if they're not charged, then they're, the charge is just, isn't, can't be probable. So we never want to go that long, but we usually want to see folks within a matter of a few weeks, and I think this will accomplish that goal.
And you said something about jury trials, the, it'll be the same process as over at Pendleton, we leave, call in jurors, same process?
Yeah, we still do that now, but it's, it's a little bit more rare to have a jury trial for a lower-level misdemeanor, I would say. And so for, for these higher-level misdemeanors, there's more at stake. DUIs have mandatory sentences set by statute, and so a lot of times the options to negotiate DUI are really limited. And so those, that's why those cases are tried more. So I expect more jury trials with, with the change, which I'll deal with.
And it's not the same process as the circuit court, it's similar, you know, the city sends out those letters, sets up the jury pool, and we call them here and all of that. So it would be a different pool, because it's only residents of the city, yeah, correct?
And the fees or fines, then that's possibly handed out, that's money that's going to come to Hermiston.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, Your Honor and city staff, thank you so much. This has been almost a decade in the works, and to be able to retake back A misdemeanors is, thank you for stepping up to the plate, both prosecutor, defense, judge, court administrator. There's a lot of cleanup and a lot of getting ahead of the ballgame that we had to do, and so really appreciate it of the city staff. This is going to ensure that our citizens get swifter justice and justice that should be quicker from the onset. And so I hope that this alleviates a little bit of what the district attorney has to handle or knows the analog. So thank you for city staff, judge, and everybody that added a hand in this process.
We really have excellent staff at the court. I really enjoy working with all three of them. Ms. Viles is doing an excellent job, we have a new clerk that is recently hired, she's really doing fantastic, so my experience in court with her has been very positive. If I could use this minute though, just to maybe bring something up that might be a topic of discussion, I know it's probably not great timing with the budget concerns, but there is an issue of jail bed capacity. And at the county level, it's generally hard for me to keep people in jail if I need to. And so that is a discussion that maybe the city council could take up at some point, and maybe I'd be welcome to join those discussions. But I know in the past, the city has had dedicated beds at the jail or A bed. I don't, I don't, we don't have A bed right now. So a lot of times we are city Hermiston folks, they're in custody, and other courts are holding them. If those courts are done adjudicating those folks, then our folks are just released, even though I've placed bail. And so that's something, a discussion, I think, that would be worthwhile to have to some point in the near future, especially with these A misdemeanors coming back, so.
That's a good idea. Ms. Peterson?
I just want to say that, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention, and then also getting to this point, literally award-winning effort, she was back there smiling, because it was a big team effort, and to see, let's get to this point, knowing that the wheels are going to turn a little bit faster, and people can say, yeah, we see that accountability is happening, it's happening more quickly, this is awesome. And I really appreciate people willing to, you know, take this on, because I know that these things are going to be a lot more serious, and there's going to be a lot more happening, and so team effort, and I'm just, I'm thrilled we got to this point. And it's just, again, awesome, just awesome.
Thank you, and thanks to you. So you're always welcome to come and visit us in court and just kind of check us out.
I can open the back.
Overly not up in these tables?
It would be nice if it was posted somewhere, you know, the time and days that you have court, because I've been here once, but.
So Monday and Wednesday afternoons right now, but we're adding some, some docket schedules, we'll try to get, we have some ideas of the consistent docket schedule, I think Thursday's we'll have some more appearance times, but, you know, you can always pop into Ms. Viles's office, and I'm sure she'll touch, you know, but usually Monday and Wednesday afternoon.
I have a follow-up, your last comment begs a question for me, at least to understand one. I guess the last time that we did have, I guess, preserved beds or anything for Hermiston, do you know when the last time that we had some observations on that?
I don't know the specifics behind that, it was at least before, you know, at least 10 years.
And I know that the jail has had, I guess, an issue with capacity for a while. When I worked in drug court, sometimes we would sanction certain clients, they'd have to go to jail for the weekend, and oftentimes, by the time that the officer took the person to the jail and then they came back, they were already kind of matrixed out of the system, and so they were already out. And so it just, it kind of ties your hands in being able to hold people accountable, and so this might require more of a community discussion, but I believe what the judge mentioned here should marry more of the community discussion.
Well, I mean, I have some concerns with that concept, but I will say that, I think that the sheriff has done a much better job of keeping that moving in a good way, maybe than prior administrations have done in the sheriff's office. And I know they've made some improvements to try to, to keep, you know, have more beds. And so I think, you know, having some discussion with sheriff's office and, and police department and the court, you know, we can, we can come up with some thoughts and ideas about that.
So, yeah, that'll, that'll have to be, I'm sure it'll be a contractual discussion, because it's a monetary thing as well, because a dedicated bed, I do know, having been around that for a minute or two, we, I do remember us when we, you know, I actually remember when we had a jail at the police department, okay? And there may be a few people in this room that remember that as well, but, but when that, when that went away, then we contracted with the sheriff's office to maintain, you know, A bed or two, or, again, but it will be a contractual thing, and it's, it's going to take some discussions that are going to need to take place before it gets to us, so. Okay, thank you, Your Honor, appreciate your comments on that. Are there any other council comments in regards to this? Any public comment on Resolution 2301? Okay. A little scared here for a second. Can I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2301 and lay it on the record?
Second.
And motion by Ms. Linton, and second by Councilor Peterson. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Zero. Okay, next item is the November 2023 financial report. City Manager Smith?
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of the council. We'll start off with the urban renewal area. There's been, again, no expenditures through the end of November in that area, but we did see property taxes collected of about $292,000, which is 98% of our projected amount in that area. But nothing, should see some expenditure activity kicking up in the second half of the year. So from a general fund standpoint, November is always the large income month in our fiscal year. As of December 4th, we've collected 6.9 million of the $7.4 million in property tax that we budgeted for. That revenue is doing really well, and also as far as revenue, the building department continues to have a lot of permit activity, so things are still moving forward in that, in that area. Now, expenditure side, if you look from a year-to-date standpoint, we're about 4.2% of a projection of what we project to spend at this point in the year, so that's, that's a pretty good number. Things always happen, they slide different times of the year, different points, and one of the, you see the public services is on the wrong side there. We were under, we overspent from what our projection was, wasn't an overspend from a total standpoint, but what we project for this point in the year. And most of that is $85,000 more in, um, airport expenses, which is mostly fuel. And we've seen a lot more activity up there since Lifeflight has, uh, put a base up there and they're, they're flying a lot out of that, out of the airport, so. Then from a fund balance standpoint, uh, this is really where we see, uh, you know, no, this is the time of year, we don't really worry about the fund balance necessarily. We're at $7.8 million, uh, with 2.5 as our minimum reserve. So we're in good shape in this area. From a utilities, uh, standpoint, um, all of them really look pretty, pretty good. The, the street fund and HES both have maybe a little bit of an over expenditure. And I would, uh, we don't have a sophisticated, uh, projection on this. We just kind of take all expenses and divide them up by 12. And that isn't really how our expenses come across the year. And so the, sometimes they get moved around, but everything, um, nothing that's enough of an amount to be of concern at this point. Now the, um, capital projects, uh, most of these are, are really kind of coming to a conclusion or they're just beginning. So we got North First Place, uh, it's open, hope everybody's driven on it. It's a nice, smooth road, enjoyable, um. You know, everybody's complaining about how, how, you know, it was bad before and so now it's a nice, enjoyable experience. Uh, the AWS system expansion, this is, um, kind of some of the, the bids that Mark talked about tonight. Some of the work was, was awarded in November, some of the work was awarded tonight. So that will be moving forward on the different projects related to both, um, processed water coming and going from the plants. Uh, lead and copper program, this is something we talked about last month. Um, we're, we'll be talking to the contractor in December to start with, coming up with an implementation plan. Again, to touch about 350 meters each side, testing pipes. And so we have a better idea of how much lead pipe is there. And then we just found out recently that the federal government's going to make us replace all of that at some point, so. Mr. Council President, should he add any questions?
Um, is this the demand of the state where they were saying we had to test all the pipes?
Yeah, it's actually the EPA, so the federal, not the state, but yeah.
Okay, so are they going to give us money yet or they're not going to?
I, I, I wouldn't count on it.
Unfunded mandates.
They, they often like to tell us to do stuff and then they'll give us some money to do it.
Thank you.
Uh, this is well number five. We're kind of coming to the end of that. Uh, this is now they're finishing up, uh, works on, work on the pumps and motors inside the, the well, the well system. Uh, they had done the piping work already, so we should be seeing the end of this project probably early next year. Then again, this is another piece of the first place project. This is the, and we separated, this is the water line. This is the ODOT grant that we got, couldn't pay for this part, so we, we need to separate it to show, show it differently. But we're ready to close those projects out. And then planning is starting and design on lattice and main waterline replacement. So we're going to tear up some streets on this side of the highway this year. And, um, we should, uh, see that go out to bid this winter for construction or, uh, in the spring and summer of next year, so. And here's the last part of the AWS, um, related projects. And so this is where we're looking to take their water and pipe it to the canal. So can we reuse the, the cooling water that they use, uh, in the, in the data centers? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's a good gap for more money, but it looks like we're spending it currently at this point. Ms. Linton?
Just curious as to when, uh, let down the denied fight, when that going to take place? I know we did emergency things there, but.
Yes, we actually hope to begin work on that here within the next month from an emergency standpoint.
Thank you.
Ms. Peterson, your question.
So we're hearing the, uh, continual gas being bought at the airport. And that's always seems to be a, a grid mark on our budget. Is, are we going to at some point just start to, you know, figure out, you know, is that going to start to, we're going to figure out a new baseline so that?
Well, what we currently do is a three-year average for all those when we look at projections. And so as we have more of those, it will start to creep into the projections because of the three years. And then, Mark, has something else?
I was just going to mention too, um, when we, the, by far the biggest driver on that is Lifeflight, um, fuel purchases. And when we were engaging in our discussions with them, that was right during budget season. And so we didn't want to count our chickens before they hatched. So we just made the budget the same as it was last year, knowing that we can come back again. Particularly on that one, since increased expenditures are directly associated with increased fuel purchases revenue to offset it. So we knew that on that one, we'll be able to come back and, and adjust the budget during the year because there's revenue coming in associated with it. So we wanted to be conservative and only budget for what had been done previously. So in future budgets, we'll take that into account. But we didn't want to bake that in because the, the leak screen with the Lifeflight had not been completed in budget time this year.
But the timing of that, we'll go on top of, you know, budgeting for it. It'll start to get into the projections we, as they get hopefully a little regular on when those purchases get made.
But at the same time, fuel costs is a, is a huge driver as well. You can't, you know, the tea leaves aren't out there to be rid, so to speak.
Right.
The fluctuation of gas, gas prices.
Right, we'll have to do our best guess on that piece of it.
Any other council comments on the November financial? Seeing none. Public comments? Seeing none. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the November financial report ads presented?
So move. Second?
It's been motion by Council Linton and second by Council Peterson. Get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Passes unanimously. All right. City committees and liaisons, anybody who got city committee or liaison reports today? Two, no, and that's unknown for me as well. All right, Council President report. Tree lighting and parade went wonderful. I, I, from what I saw of it, and, uh, I was, I was, I was there. I, I, that's all I'll say about that. I was there. Um, no, it seemed like it went quite well, uh, well attended. My understanding is, is the guy in red brought snow with him from the north. That was pretty cool. Um, it was wet snow, I will tell you that much. But at the end of the night, um, but yeah, any, Brandon, well done, nice job. And where we worked, I know that, uh, we worked well with, with, uh, several partner agencies. And the street department was out there keeping, keeping everybody in their lanes, as it were, for the most part. But it seemed to be really well done, so good on you guys to, good job on, on everybody involved with that. It turned out really well. It's a big, uh, it's a big feather in our cap that we were able to accomplish that. Second of all, stepping stones, ribbon cutting was accomplished. I know one of us forgot the day. Sorry, I missed. So, but from what I understand and from the photos and such that I saw, it looked like it went well. Anybody throw something out there?
Well, I, I think all of the rest of your fellow colleagues there were attending, so.
Of course. It's one of those, what am I supposed to be doing today? Do I have something I screwed up, so? Um, but yeah, from what I understand, it looked like it went well, real well. Uh, I saw photos and they did, you know, there's a lot of good work going on out there, so, um, good, good for that. Uh, as you mentioned earlier, uh, South First Place or North First Place, uh, reopened? Yes, I've driven on it. Yes, it is smooth. Yes, it is a nice road. So looks nice, looks like they're still, uh, still got lots of stuff to get done on, some finishing up. But it looks really well, keeps, is progressing. The final thing that I need to do is, Mr. Smith, would you mind standing up and showing off that fancy fancy tie there? Because, uh, it's pretty, it's pretty spiffy as I, and if you notice, the, uh, the creator of it, she put a picture on it a couple of different times, so I want you to thank her when you leave.
That was Lily that did that? Am, am I understanding that was, that was Lily? That's correct. It was Lily, okay.
I can't take all the credits.
You don't get to use this. Yes, she can.
And yada, well, yes, and, and thank you Lily, by the way. Uh, Lily, uh, during the, between the last two meetings, Lily got us power supply up here for our laptops, our, our tablets, so we can keep our information charged up, as it were. So thanks Lily for getting that accomplished. It looks nice and it works really well, using it right now, so.
Lily's awesome.
Yes, she is, she is. Council reports. Anybody got any care to share? Ms. Peterson?
So I went to the, uh, ribbon cutting and actually spent a good chunk of my time hanging out with a gentleman who hopes to be one of the first residents there. Um, you know, brought him a cup of coffee and we just talked and he was, you know, he said he was looking forward to being there and he was looking, he was thinking it was going to be a great opportunity. Um, he's a local gentleman, um, he looked like a friend brought him, um, that's from the area. And, and he just, he seemed really joyful. And that this was something that it, it made it, you know, he had a lot of hope in him and it was great to see. And so, you know, that was my, I mean, it was, it was great seeing all of Hermiston, the mound stuff, but that was my favorite part of the entire ribbon cutting was just sitting there, talking to someone that was looking forward to moving there and that was going to be his shot of, of starting, you know? And that's, that's all he really wanted. And so getting to talk to one of our, our local, um, uh, individuals that, that need a roof and they need that stability. And the coffee was great and everything else, but it's like that was, that was everything. And everyone who made that happen, that moment possible, that, that was amazing. So, I mean, Hermiston did itself proud at a certain, but everyone who made that moment possible for that gentleman, who as far as I'm concerned was kind of the guest of honor, um, it was just that. I loved it. It was just amazing. So, um, you know, our people know that we care and it was obvious in his face.
I also got to attend the stepping stones ribbon cutting. Uh, it was my first time actually to the site, so it was, uh, quite the drive and being able to get there. And even though it was 50 degrees, it was still really, really chilly out there. So, uh, just kind of a reminder of, you know, how great it is to have a place like this, uh, that all these entities, the city, the county, other cities in the, in the west end came together to be able to, to, to support the citizens in the best way that we could. And so, uh, there's a lot of great speakers that spoke, a lot of, uh, mayors, uh, elected officials. And a big shout out again to Kathy Lloyd. I remember as, I'm sure maybe a lot of the council would remember, the first time that they, that she came and presented stepping stones as an idea to the council. And, and truth be told, the first time that it was presented, it was a great idea and there needed to be a lot of work that needed to be done to support that idea. And absolute congratulations to her for, for pushing through because she was probably told no quite a bit. She was probably, um, faced some tough times, uh, especially with trying to gather people's support. Try to have people understand, uh, the issue on both sides. And at the end of the day, I think our community really rallied and, and have, have a great part of, product to be proud of. And, uh, hopefully as a model to the state. And so, uh, just a great day, uh, to be out there, a frigid day. And, uh, again, a reminder that it's going to get colder. And so this is, this is a great asset for our community. So thank you to everyone that attended. Uh, thank you everyone that supported, uh, and thank you for everyone that's going to continue because I know that there's going to need to be a lot of volunteering efforts. And just because it was a ribbon cutting doesn't mean the work isn't done. So there's still work to be, to be done on it, but definitely a, a great day to celebrate.
I too am very excited that the facility is there, uh, finally. I think it took longer than most had anticipated. You know, I'm still concerned because I see some folks, um, out still in the streets. So, you know, I've asked the question, do they know that, um, there's a warming station? Do they know that there's something, you know, place for them to go? And I've been told, yes, they do know. Um, you know, but my, my heart, my thoughts still go out to the folks that I see, um, sometimes wandering by Bonard or other places. So I hope that, um, as the facility is starting running, um, which we're not there yet, that more people hear about it and that they do, um, find their way there. I know that the city provides transportation, so, um, I hope that, you know, they are, we are able to get as many people into a warm facility as best as we can. And yes, I do also want to thank all of the folks that were involved. I did miss the, the speech. I was, um, at another meeting prior to that, so, but it was nice to see everyone. And it was nice to see, you know, what they've been able to do. So, um, kudos to everyone that took a big part of, um, making this a reality for, for our community.
Yes, I want to say thank you to everyone too. Um, when Kathy first came and brought that idea, I was, wasn't on city council, but I definitely backed that up. I'm, uh, from a family that you have a sliced bread, you gotta share it with somebody else, you know? And, uh, so I was definitely glad to see that. Like, I'm saying something now because I want to thank Lily. Um, she cooks and goes up to, um, the sleeping center and provides food and serves the food. And so I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know who else does it, whether it's city council or, or, uh, city employees, but, uh, I was glad to see that, you know? That was awesome. Thank you, Lily.
Okay, and I, I neglected to mention a couple of the things that, uh, that, uh, Brandon and company have been doing. We had Pancakes with Santa this last Saturday, very, very well attended. Lots, how was it, 225-ish?
Sold out.
Sold out. And then we have the, uh, EOTech lighting, um, that's, uh, that's also taking place. Drive-through, walk-through. My understanding is, is that Santa will be up there at least one more night up there. Um, I'm told it's on the 22nd, I don't know. I may have some insight on that, but let me say that. But Pancakes with Santa, wonderful, wonderful, lots of kids, uh, love seeing the blue faces, so. Mr. City Manager?
I, I have nothing else.
With the tie, I mean, with the tie.
With this, I mean, there's nothing else to say.
Everybody else is there to say it, right?
That's right.
All right, uh, and unless anybody else has anything else? Roger?